Sometimes on the same day.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll move on to item number three, approving the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Trying to think if I had anything. I gotta double.
I'll make a second to the motion.
Okay. Yeah, we need a second, I think.
Yep. I was just double checking.
I was here.
That I didn't have any notes. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four, our public hearing.
Madam Chair and members of the Commission, tonight we actually have three public hearings. So, we'll go back to back to back. First one is related to the solar ordinance. It was most recently reviewed by this group on April 19th. At that meeting, there was a pretty hearty discussion related to a couple of topics in the draft ordinance at that time, mostly related to glare, so traffic if there's a solar array in a backyard, decommission of the equipment if someone chooses to no longer have it when it becomes a public nuisance, and if ground-mounted equipment should be an accessory use. So you see that the ordinance has been updated to reflect that conversation that was had with the Planning Commission. So, in the ordinance tonight that you are considering for recommendation to the council, there is a glare study requirement for anything in the backyard. There's a decommissioning plan that requires people to remove the array once it's no longer collecting solar. And it does allow ground-mounted solar for an accessory use. So, the ordinance does a really great job laying out some conditions about location, size, and height, but it is permitted as an accessory use. On the screen now is a table that's within the ordinance that lays out where they are permitted, if they're permitted on the building or as a ground-mounted system. And as you'll see, the system must be accessory to the principal use, but they are permitted within most residential districts, the only one being the traditional residential which encompasses most of downtown, which was felt that would take away from the historic charm. So, at this time, they are permitted in residential districts except for the traditional residential. So tonight, there is a public hearing that goes along with the recommendation of the ordinance to the City Council. So, after discussion, feel free to open up the public hearing. And then tonight, we are looking for a motion. Staff would recommend approval based on the work that the City Council has done and the Planning Commission at this time. So, I'm going to open it up for discussion, and we can walk through the public hearing.
We discuss before we open the public hearing, right?
You may, yes.
Right, so. I'm just trying to clarify on what I remember, on the glare?
Yes.
Okay. So if it's ground-mounted, you don't have to do like a formal glare study. Formal, there's like an informal way of doing it, which is on page four, item number D. Page four, item D, which is different than page five, item D, using the tool, solar glaze hazard analysis tool. Which kinda makes sense, but I just wanted to make sure, like, we're talking about, because you know in part D, it says, "Must provide an analysis or technical documentation from the manufacturer of the ground-mounted solar energy system." So, this is residential, right?
Correct, yes.
So, that's like me putting in something and not, you know, and trying to make sure that it's not impacting the glare of my neighbor, right?
Yes.
So, so as far, and we don't have to go through the, this other process on page five D.
Correct. So, five D is for the community solar energy. So, if you picture like a large farm acreage, that would have several solar panels as opposed to a residential property which would have a smaller array. So, the beefier study that would be required would be for the large community solar projects.
Which would be more of a commercial project, right? Okay.
And just to be clear for those community solar projects, they're rooftop only. They cannot be on the ground.
Right.
So we are not allowing any ground, large, solar in within Carver.
Uh, large, so.
Good question.
If it's an accessory use in the residential, it just needs to meet the same that, like a shed would, so.
No, 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 let me.
No, what, outside of residential, then?
Right, so I, you know, in, east of Jordan, there are several large farm fields that have been converted to solar. That is not allowed within this ordinance.
No, not within this ordinance.
Okay. Is there a plan to be a separate ordinance for that?
I think if there was need and direction from the council, but at this time, no.
Okay, so this is specifically a, and maybe this, so the solar energy ordinance is really only about accessory use?
In residential districts, yes.
Okay. And then, can you go back to the table that you had?
Sure.
What's a TR?
Traditional residential. So that's mostly our downtown within the historic district.
So what's outside of downtown referred to as?
So the RUS is residential onshore. R1 is low-density, ranging to R3, which is higher density.
Okay. Because I, where did I see it in the ordinance? Because I was struggling with the definitions in this chart, as well as the mention, I'm scrolling through where I saw it. There was somewhere else where we talk about the specific districts, and they are not RUS, R1. They're different terms. Here it is, sorry. Page four, at the bottom, number three, where we say "community solar energy systems", we say "industrial, freeway, commercial, general, commercial, and public institutional zoning districts."
So again, that's for the larger scale of the solar project.
Okay, so. I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
The difference between that paragraph and this chart. So is that, is the community solar energy systems not on this chart?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Because the table was before we got into the two sections in the ordinance. That's why I was confused. We might want to move the table to that section of the ordinance. I don't know. If I had a hard time understanding it, I don't know. Someone else might as well.
And something to think about, too, is if this ordinance is adopted, it gets layered in to our zoning code. So there is some context both before and after that lays out some of these definitions, clearly, just not within the specific section.
Okay.
But technically, in an area zone industrial, somebody could want to come along and put in a
Community.
Community solar.
But they could only mount it to the roof of a building.
Correct.
Per this ordinance. They could not put in a ground installation of just solar panels.
Yes, sorry.
That was my question I had before, and she said yes.
Okay, so I, this going back to make a full circle on the glare impact?
Sorry, go back to your glare. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Is there any concerns with this, like neighbor-to-neighbor, lack of glare impact? I mean, as far as, is that interpreted to be this neighborly? As far as making sure that, you know, that's not an issue?
I think that this ordinance does cover it. I know some older technology did have quite a bit of glare, and as things continue to move forward, I find them to be less obtrusive with glare. So, with this information that we're using, I do think it is covered.
I mean, I would assume that anybody trying to sell residential solar systems, right, would have considered this, and would be able to provide documentation to the homeowner who could provide it to the city.
Right, so it'd be part of permitting?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, you would think.
It is required.
You're assuming legitimate.
I'm assuming that, I haven't personally researched putting solar panels on my house, but I would.
Or freestanding panels.
Or freestanding panels in my yard, right, for residential use. I have not researched this, but I would assume that that manufacturer would have considered, oh, it's going to be for residential use, let's make sure it's.
I mean, anything that you look up as far as like the negative or concerns of, you know, are really this and screening.
Yeah.
That at least I could find, as far as the controversial topics. So, on that same note, then, is screening part of this as well for residential? Or is that only for like a bigger community garden?
So screening gets a little bit challenging, just because depending on where the sun is, you hope to have optimal sun hitting.
Right.
The panel, so screening is not called out.
Especially for ground-mounted.
Right.
Your roof isn't really as, well, it could be, I suppose, depending on, I mean, if you had like a really high, you know, two-story roof, and then your neighbor behind you is a little, depends on what the angles all come down to be.
Yeah, I think more the issue is the glare.
Right.
In that scenario, versus screening.
So you feel like the due diligence is embedded in this?
I do, yes.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that?
Madam Chair, if I can make a comment.
Dana?
I would just say, we've seen several iterations of this over the last several months, and talked about solar, I think, at several meetings here. And I just want to say, glare was one of the things that I brought up as a concern in the residential areas previously. And reading through all the stuff that has been presented here this evening, I think staff's done a great job taking in all the information and the feedback, both from us, council. And I like what I see. I think you've done a great job to address the concerns that we brought up with glare setbacks. We talked about screening and the challenges with all those. So, I just want to say, I'm pleased with what I see, and I'm very comfortable with what's being presented here this evening.
Great. All my questions are answered. I'm okay. I just want to make sure I understood.
So we can move forward with opening the public hearing?
Yes.
I have a quick question.
We're gonna reverse.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
The part about decommissioning them, is that covered under a community solar energy system? So page four?
Sure.
Section three? Or something in the terms of the abandonment or dismissal? Is there something that would give the city?
Right. That letter H on page four might be better suited as a more general topic instead of just related to the residential. That's a good suggestion.
Yeah, that, I would like to suggest to reword that.
Yeah.
Or the order of it more.
Yeah, yeah, I like her suggestion.
I know we're getting this out of context, but that layout.
I think that's a good suggestion.
That was my only question or comment.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Thank you. Okay, we will move forward with opening the public hearing?
Any public comment about the solar energy? Okay, we're gonna have two more public hearings, so stay tuned.
Way to sell it.
Okay. So if we don't have anybody that moved forward, we don't have to, do we still close it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Mm-mm.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the draft ordinance pertaining to solar energy systems with the modification that we discussed of taking number two H and abandonment, and making that more of a gentle part of the ordinance, applying to both types of systems.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to 4.2, the comprehensive plan amendment.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I'm going to speak broadly about the next two agenda items since they're the same action. So, this first little bit is general about both of them. We'll go into some project specifics about both. So, as you all are very well aware, the City of Carver is within the Met Council jurisdiction, so we are required every 10 years to update our comprehensive plan, which also includes a future land use map, which guides property for development. So, examples of those that we guide, so low-density, medium-density, high-density, industrial, commercial. It's our way to lay out the city for the next 10 years generally. So, currently, we're using the 2030 plan as we continue to work on our 2040 plan. So, think about this with 2030 as the plan that we're using, the one that's currently adopted. As part of the process with the Met Council, communities can amend their land use map with a formal application to the Met Council. So, this is one of the steps that's required before it can be processed to them for their review. So tonight, we're going to hold a public hearing on two different projects. Both are comp plan amendments. Both are related only to land use guidance. So tonight, no project-specific details. We're not reviewing a preliminary plat or rezoning. It's just the comp plan amendments. So moving into the first one that gives you a little bit more depth as to what we're talking about. This project that's highlighted on the screen, it is south of 212, just south of Mills, and northwest of Carver Elementary, so if everyone has their bearings of where we're at. So that's the parcel that we're going to be talking tonight about regiding. In the 2030 comprehensive plan that we're using right now that's adopted, it is zoned as a commercial use, and the request tonight is to move it to a low-density use. So going from commercial to low-density. Low-density would allow for two to four units per acre for development, and the project's being worked on by D.R. Horton. It's a project that's being called Meridian Fields at this time. The project is moving through a couple other reviews. I do anticipate it'll be before Planning Commission, probably at the next meeting for preliminary plat. But again, tonight, it's just the comp plan amendment. So what does that look like visually? On the left hand of the screen is the 2030 guidance, or the plan that we're operating with today. You'll see that the site is split with red, which is commercial, and the deep yellow-orange, which is high-density. And in our draft 2040 plan, you'll see that it's guided to low-density. So that is the switch that we're looking for, for you to think about tonight, to forward on to council. We package everything together and submit to the Met Council for their review. As part of a comprehensive plan amendment, there is an adjacent jurisdiction review. So this review is sent to 13 other jurisdictions, ranging from Carver County to Watershed Districts to the DNR, to the Minnesota Department of Transportation. They have 60 days to review, so we are within that 60-day period. I've heard from five out of the 13 right now, all have waved comment on the project saying, "We don't foresee a major issue." So next, this will be reviewed by the City Council on Monday. The 60-day window will close for jurisdictional review, will forward on to the Met Council. This project also is requiring annexation, so it has a lot of projects running simultaneously. So, once the project is annexed into the city, we can move on preliminary plat, too. So, lots of things happening on this one, but tonight, it's just that comp plan amendment to re-guide the property from commercial and high-density to low-density. This process does, again, require a public hearing. Staff has been working closely with D.R. Horton on their plans and these several planning processes that we're working through. And based on review of the City Council at the concept plan, staff would recommend approval of the comprehensive plan amendment once you hold your public hearing and have discussion. So, I will turn it over to you to discuss, and open the public hearing when you see fit.
Just a quick question. So regarding the 2040 comprehensive plan, what is the timing of that to be submitted to Met Council, just for my reference?
Sure. So we filed for an extension.
Okay.
With some pretty significant staff changes, with people who need to be pretty hands-on with the plan, both the city engineer and myself. We're thinking we're tracking about six months behind at this point. So, hoping to have everything into them in January, and have that six-month close in June. Sorry. January will go out for a six-month review by the 13 jurisdictions that are also reviewing this. So, likely a year from now, our new plan will be adopted.
Okay, okay. I thought we were close.
We're definitely getting there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, that was my question. I mean, personally, from my perspective, because I participated in the 2040 comprehensive plan team, I don't have an issue with this changing to low-density, because we have this developer that's come in, purchased the land and whatever, and wants to develop it in that way. And with the 2040 plan, we've accounted for that density and that commercial elsewhere in our plan. So I feel like overall, we're still meeting the objectives of what the city wants to do, what the Met Council wants to do. So I just really don't have any heartburn with this specific change, because it's in alignment with everything we've already looked at.
This is about 30 or 40 acres?
Roughly 45.
The amount that's going from high-density to low-density, is that amount, is 45, not the whole?
No, so the entire property is roughly 45 acres. And again, like Joy was saying, at this point in our comprehensive plan process, we can account for those changes elsewhere. It's a pretty good time for this to be happening, because we can think about it in a more of a fluid way instead of thinking, "We need to change another spot immediately."
Right, but there's still opportunity for that, too, as we move forward on this
Correct.
comprehensive plan, if we would need to. Most people don't really quibble about moving to low-density.
No.
No.
No. And I mean, you know, when we did the 2030 plan at that time, we didn't have the school. We didn't have the park and ride. We didn't have any of that stuff. And that's really what's driven this particular development. So, you know, I like what we did with the 2040 plan. I think it's appropriate. We're still keeping a portion of commercial there, and we added commercial and higher-density elsewhere in our plan to compensate for that loss, so.
I would agree. I think you summed that up nicely.
I don't have any issue.
Okay. Anything down there? Okay. Okay, at this time, we can open up the public hearing?
Anybody want to come talk about this piece of property?
So this is for, this is for Meridian Fields specifically.
How's it going?
Good.
Hi there. So we need you to, just to follow the rules, I guess.
Yeah.
And I have to be reminded of that, too, sometimes, so just state your name and address.
Yeah, Kyle Kalner, 1641 White Pine Way. And I guess I was trying to pull it up, but my internet's being slow. The Meridian Fields that we're talking about here, is this phase one of multiple phases, or is this the whole phase in general?
So for this property, it's the entire, the development is the entire property.
Entire property, okay. Because yeah, I had been on the city site and saw the development, and yeah, I know it was commercial before. I didn't know that it was going to be, you know, left a bit of commercial, so I like it as well. I was just curious if we were talking about the rezoning now of just that phase one that they're building, or if it was like all, whatever, four phases, and it sounds like we are.
So if you, did you get my mailing the first round?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay, well, as we move forward with preliminary plat, there are additional public hearings. So, once we start moving towards some of the nitty-gritty project details, there's more opportunity to come and talk about the project in more specifics. Since this is so high-level, just the guidance, you're definitely on the right track.
Okay, cool, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I can make a motion to recommend the approval of the comprehensive plan amendment regarding the property, moving it from mixed, was that the right one? No, let me move it. Hang on just one moment. It's backwards, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
They're testing us.
They are testing us. Well, let me see.
Yeah.
Regarding, yeah, pending the, is it recommendation, approval of the comprehensive plan amendment, pending annexation of the city, from commercial to low-density.
So it would be regiding.
Guiding, right.
Correct, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry about that. We have our pages reversed. Okay, so we will move on to 4.3. Right?
Redmond Property.
Yes.
4.2.
I went backwards.
Okay.
Let me flip this around. Okay, 4.2.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, again, we have a public hearing before you tonight related to a comprehensive plan amendment. So, same process, different property, some different details, same developer, both D.R. Horton. So, on the screen now is the second property that we need to think about, regiding from the 2030 plan. So it's the Redmond Property. It was once notoriously a llama farm, from what I've heard. Broadway is this kind of on the southeast corner. It's kind of smack dab in the middle of Carver right now. So, if you don't know the property, you can get through it from Broadway up, is it Snake Trail? It's humbly called in Carver. So, that's the property that we're going to discuss at this point. So in the 2030 plan, again, the plan we have adopted today, the property is guided for a mix of low-density, so that two to four units per acre and medium-density, which is four to eight units per acre. The request tonight is to re-guide the entire property to low-density. So, moving away from the mix of the two, just to low-density. Again, D.R. Horton is working on the development of this project. This one's a few steps behind the Meridian Fields project. We haven't seen a formal concept before council at this time, so I don't have as many project-specific details. But again, we're just thinking about the guidance of the property. As a visual, the 2030 plan, you'll see, has a pretty clear line of the medium-density and the low-density. This property is unique due to the amount of bluff that is on the property that hitting a medium-density across that site likely would have been challenging, just because there isn't a ton of developable space that would need to hit the four to eight units per acre. So again, in the draft 2040 plan, the entire site is guided for low-density residential.
Do you, can you, could someone help me with the logic that, I remember talking about this at the 2040, but I just want to remember our logic of why we moved that to all low-density? Because I think originally, we had that northern portion, medium-density, because the adjacent property to the west was more that medium-density townhome.
True.
Right, but that development kind of evolved over time, and I think some of it did convert to single-family home. Which is why we then said, okay, it's okay to make that whole entire property then low-density.
Right. I also, based on the site size and how much of it is developable, it would be tricky to hit that medium-density.
Yeah, because there's some elevation issues with that property, aren't there?
Correct, yes. There are two pretty, compared to the site, it's two pretty small pockets that could develop.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sure.
So you're saying this is much more realistic with this space? I mean, like, really operationally?
It's more realistic probably for the topography. It's also fitting in better with the adjacent properties now that they have developed than what we were thinking 10 years ago when we did the previous one. And again, same, my same comment stands for this development, right? We've accounted for that difference in density elsewhere in the plan as well.
Have we? Not this particular piece. I mean, we have.
How much of a change is this in numbers? I mean, how big is that medium-density?
So I would say the site is roughly 60 acres. I would account that 40 of it was likely medium-density, but again, I would say 30% of that total site area is developable. Moving towards the low-density residential also gives us a bit of opportunity as staff, moving forward with the Planning Commission and council, to think about this area for some preservation as well, just with the ravines and the bluffs that are in there. So, thinking about it in a way that could benefit both people who are living around the project, but also the city, if we could get. the project, but also the city if we could get a great trail connection through there.
So, but speaking to your concern, you want to make sure that we're accounted for throughout the comprehensive plan and the difference?
We didn't, we didn't make changes to account for this change. We did for the other one.
Oh, really?
Is that right?
No, in the draft 2040 plan, this is low-density as well.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
Because we have higher density added out further west.
What was that?
We have high-density that we, I think.
Was north, north?
There's more north and more west. Correct, yes, correct.
A large majority to the east of this property is already developed, so much of...
I mean, in the comprehensive plan.
In the comprehensive plan, yeah. In the draft 2040.
On the western edge, even like west of Mills Fleet Farm, we've...
Correct, and north of that area as well, yeah.
If some of this land is undevelopable, you can take that out of the density calculations for the Met Council, right?
Yes.
Madam Chair and City Manager, I have some questions on the ratio of how many homes per acre.
Okay.
So I understand about 122 acres, and I like the idea that we would maybe have access to some of the topography and be able to, you know, get some preservation in there. So in theory, if there's 122 acres and the low density is two to four acres, would they be looking at 244 to 488 homes?
No, I'm going to pull up the acreage.
Or is it just that's, what we're thinking is maybe 60 acres that's buildable?
So the site in total is about 60. I'm going to pull that up to confirm.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because what I'm looking to see is what's the maximum number of houses?
That you could get in that space?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. So much of that work has not been completed at this time since we haven't seen concept. Much of it hasn't been essentially dug into by the developer, the developers engineer, but based on site size... It is 122 acres. I feel like you may have looked that up.
Somebody in the staff put together good...
Oh, it was me.
The packet. I got that from your packet.
So I'm just going to pull up a base map quick that shows some of the developable space on the site. So as you can see, it's largely the pocket where the existing home is today. And then there's a small pocket of land here. So again, much of the site won't be touched by development.
It's, it's all going to be adjacent to single-family homes, so it fits better.
So is that ratio of two to four homes per acre?
So you net out the, like the bluff? So I can't tell you off the top of my head what it is.
No.
Just because I don't know the topography of that site.
But visually, it looks like we're going to be okay.
I think there's bluff in there. Well, there's something.
There's, there's a ton of bluff.
Yeah.
Definitely less than half.
Yes, absolutely.
I would probably say.
Assuming the llama's a guide.
Oh, and can you explain the little strip that comes down?
Yes.
What happened there?
I actually am more familiar with that right there. And there is an easement where the single homes are that would make that area accessible. So that's probably less, 500 yards from my house.
So...
Yeah, it's Sunny Ridge Drive.
Little strip there, I mean, what is going to, what would be done with that piece of land as we go into a comprehensive plan? Is that just going to, I don't know, what do you do with it?
So the, the strip here?
Yes, that one.
Likely nothing, since it's not being used for anything today. I don't foresee a change.
Okay, it would just be like an outlaw or something like that?
Yep.
Okay, alright.
Any further discussion?
No. Good.
Okay, we can proceed with opening up the public hearing on this piece of land.
Oh, good.
Ooh, a familiar face.
This is the one I really came about.
Okay.
So I am Kyle Kalner, 1641 White Pine Way, and I actually bump up, and my neighbors, we bump up to the property.
Okay.
And, and talk to Ellen. So I have a multitude of questions. First, we'll start with kind of Lori's line of questioning. So out of the 122 acres, the, I guess if I'm D.R. Horton, I'm, and I have my map, which I did get in the mail from you, I'm going to put the house right on the bluff and then sell you two acres behind it and say you have a two-acre house, you know, you have a little postage-stamped front yard and then two acres behind it. In, in talks with, with the builder, I know the plot's not drawn up yet, is that possible? Is that, is there any guidance we would offer to D.R. Horton or the other?
There is a member from the development staff here tonight.
Okay.
So it would probably be a discussion. At this point, since we don't have concept, I can't speak much to the really specific nitty-gritty of the project. So are you questioning if it would be like one home?
Basically, I'm just kind of asking you how they, if, if the city has provided any guidance or recommendations on how they would like the plot to be done, which, yeah, I mean, in a, like in the Parks Commission, you know, to say like, hey, we would really like a park there, or if there's not a guidance and we're, we're more throwing it over to D.R. Horton saying, you draft it up and then we'll, we'll provide feedback after.
So that's part of the discussion tonight. So moving from the medium density to low density is how we're going to guide that property, and that sets the density requirements. So it's moving from a mix of two to four and four to eight to two to four. So that's, this map is the city's way to say, this is how we want it to develop.
Sure.
Right, but, but to yours, I think I understand your question as far as like the unbuildable portions of the property. I think that's what you're trying to get at.
Yeah, does that count?
Right?
Yeah, there are plenty of ordinances that the city has to protect those bluffs and protect certain areas. And there's, you know, guidance around tree removal and all of those sorts of things that are just general ordinances that the developer has to work around when they submit the plans to us.
Okay.
But I don't think it prevents them from doing a two-acre lot, like you say, and here's your buildable pad.
Yeah.
And you have an acre and a half of unbuildable, because I live on a bluff lot.
Okay.
And...
And they didn't sell it to you as a, a big space?
Um, no, we knew that there was some guidance on, you're not allowed to adjust your vegetation and build beyond this point.
Sure.
So both the city and the lower Minnesota River watershed district have bluff ordinances in place.
Okay.
That protect these natural resources pretty fiercely. So through development of this property, I do anticipate a large majority of it will be in an outlaw that will either be owned by the city or an HOA. So people can't go in there and build things or remove trees or do any grading work.
Okay.
So the site is pretty fiercely protected by our bluff ordinances.
Okay. That, that's good to know. Yeah, so if they were to go, like I said, I know there's cheesecaves and other things too that Ellen wanted protected, so that you guys have right of way, so to speak, with that.
Correct, yes.
So if I am the homeowner, I guess to go back to my original question then, and yeah, I buy the house and it's, I buy two acres, an acre and a half of it is behind it, it's undevelopable on my taxes and stuff, it still says I own two acres, right? But really, the city has right of way on that.
We likely will not permit any bluff to be on a private lot, so it'll be entirely within an outlaw. So no property will have an acre and a half behind them.
Oh, okay.
Just because it gets a little bit trickier then for us to maintain the bluff area, just because it's harder to say, you can't do that to your property, but if we can say it's city property, we can't have you doing anything in that area. We have some more teeth in the situation.
Sure. So then they'd be sold the small property, not the bluff wouldn't count?
Correct.
So, okay, so that leads me into my next question then. The low density is two to four houses per acre, but I believe the, the idea is that for D.R. Horton to build some higher-end houses there? Is there a ultra-low density or what happens if they were to build one house per acre? Or is that not possible?
So this low density is as low as we get currently.
Okay. You know, I mean, like, so Ellen, one house, huge property, you know, I mean, I know that was agricultural, but you know, what if D.R. Horton wants to go a route like that? Is that not even possible or they have to split the acre into two houses?
So they need to meet the guidance of our land use map. So it would be two to four units if this does move forward with the planning commission and council.
And then, oh, that's good, thank you. Is there any guidance, and you'll probably tell me no, that's okay, about in terms of parks? I mean, that was one question. And then any type of a transition between one neighborhood and the other, if they want to or not want it, just that we would offer up or, or again, kind of let them draw it up first?
Sure. So for parks, we do have a Parks Master Plan that layers in with development. It identifies areas where we think parks are needed, identifies some space that might have a cool natural resource that we want to protect and to essentially give to the residents as city property. So as development starts, there is a parkland dedication requirement, so that can either be in land or cash in lieu of. So another ordinance that's part of the development process.
Okay.
And then as for like incompatible uses, is that what your next question is?
Uh, no, not necessarily. So I know she's got, she's got a fence that goes all around the perimeter of her property. And I, I butt up to it and she's got a fence and literally on 50, I think it's 50 feet on the other side of the fence, it's still her property, because she just has so much, you know, that she wanted to maintain, like kind of buffer. So that's all like a mature trees and stuff and, you know, the deer and coyotes will all go through there.
Sure.
It's kind of nice. I would, I would assume D.R. Horton gets full right of way to say, hey, it's, because it's not a preserve necessarily, it's right on the developable plot of land, they have right of way to say, yeah, we're just going to take it all down and the next house is going right there.
So we also have a tree preservation ordinance, so it looks at significant trees that are mature. Again, that doesn't account usually for what you call like scrub trees, so buckthorn removal, anything invasive. But if significant trees do start to be taken down, a tree survey is required and then replacement is often required as well.
Okay.
So you'll want to pay attention to when we see the concept plan and the preliminary plat, because that's when we get into those details. So we'll see exactly what trees they're removing.
Sure.
And what they're replacing where, and we can make recommendations.
Sounds good.
Yeah. And so, yeah, we'll want extra input. I mean, we'll look at it and try to make sure it's going to fit within the surrounding neighborhoods.
Yeah.
That is going to fit with what the city's looking for, you know, and making sure that it's meeting all the requirements. But any other, you guys are immediately adjacent, your input is really valuable.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Joy. And Lori, it sounds like she knew. I was curious if we could go to the other map?
Yeah.
The lower property where, I forget the name of the road, where it's already going through and it's the cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
Is there already an idea of how that's going to connect through to the developable land?
Not at this point, since we don't have concept.
Okay. I mean, because you're, you're going to upset one neighbor, right? I mean, a road that ended up going through their, their property.
There will need to be access to the site.
I don't know that they would be surprised, just because it's, it's actually pretty sizable where it always just looks like an empty lot. And it's known that it's...
An access point.
Yeah, it's an access point.
And I would assume it goes right...
No one's house would be taken down.
Yeah.
Right.
But, and I would assume it'd go through, like literally as the road continues north, it would keep going through, or not necessarily?
I don't know that the topography and just the resources that are there, that it would be feasible.
Okay. All right, last question, because there's Meridian Fields, there's the Ellen property, and there's already the, all the houses going up on the, you know, on the side where the elementary school is, all the way down to the fire station. In terms of like Jonathan Carver and the traffic, are we, is there already like a road study that's happening or, you know, with all of these developments, can we have one?
This is so timely. Yes, we're working on a corridor study for Jonathan Carver Parkway.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will close.
Oh, no, 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 there's more. Come on up.
Yes, sorry.
Yes, please.
Absolutely.
Please.
I'm, I'm former, my conclusion of...
I'm going to have you...
Yes, that'd be helpful.
Can I show our property here? Sunny Ridge Drive, this is our house.
Oh, okay.
I know very well this topography.
Yeah.
This is probably a slide that people can...
Yeah, okay, yeah, thank you.
So I know very well this topography of this property. What do you want to say? I hope builders, they will build low-density houses, because my concern about nature, about environment, because of there are lots of deers, baby deers, turkeys, fox, coyotes unfortunately, raccoons, so many animals. And it's beautiful to watch them like in the winter, in the summer. So it's already when somebody will build low-density houses, it will scare them out. But still lots of woods over there because they still can live over there. And again, if it will be higher density or medium density, it's more people, more cars, more everything. So we can lose them. And it will be very sad for me, because like every day we can see this beauty. And question again, because like, sorry, I can't understand everything what people were talking. It meant houses are going to be built only where is what like light green areas. It's not going to be trees cut down, tore down, because also there is big grave, grave, correct? Where's people buried.
Yes.
A cemetery?
Big grave with next ass house, and where is big line, where is ravine, next ravine, at least six old, old graves. Mm-hmm, next ravine.
Okay. Can you speak to the preservation of cemetery? I mean, that's not going to be an issue, right?
So it's just my concern about environment, it's so beautiful place, and I hope it will be like low-density and we still can watch and enjoy all these animals what around us.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my story.
Thank you. It sounds like we're making, you know, the right recommendation here, because we are recommending the property to go from partially medium-density to all-low-density. And that's in alignment with what you're looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Yes, come on up. Hi there. If you can give us your name and address?
My name's Matthew Jones. I live two houses down from Vera. So I'm, my backyard's facing the bluff as well. Sounds like the conversation today is the best result we can get right now, so I just wanted to introduce myself and you'll probably be seeing more of me.
Good. Good.
Uh, down the road. Thank you.
Great, nice to meet you. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we will close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's, um, make a motion to proceed with a regiding the property at eight-eight-zero Broadway from mixed low-density and medium-density to low-density.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was the end of the public hearing fun.
That is the end of the public hearings.
Great. Okay, moving on to any new business?
We don't have any tonight on the agenda.
Okay. And communications? Any updates?
Do we have any sneak previews for next month?
I am anticipating that Meridian Fields will probably be in for preliminary plat and rezoning.
Can you say what that first name was or the?
Meridian Fields. So the first comp plan amendment that we looked at.
I'm going to be absent from next month.
Okay, thanks for letting me know.
Yeah.
I will be as well. Will we be doing a comprehensive plan as well? Are we going to be?
Yes, I'm working this schedule probably the first week in June.
In June?
Yeah.
Okay, so not tied to the, how, to the planning commission times?
No, I'm hoping to break it off just so if conversation needs to continue, it can instead of having that hard cutoff of a meeting start time.
Okay. Any other questions? Communications?
Any Lions, Lions announcements, updates?
Did anybody get an invitation to the, from the water district?
To the what?
The lower, the lower Minnesota...
Carver watershed district.
Yeah, watershed district.
No.
Because they're doing a cruise down the Minnesota.
What?
On the twentieth of June. Actually, it's a three-day, so it's, one day is Minnesota, second day is, I can't remember, was a bus tour. And then the third day was a training session. So it's twenty, twenty-first and twenty-second.
That's with our planning commission. Our planning commission meeting is on the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, correct.
We can go to that.
We could do it on a boat, maybe.
I was going the other two days.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.